See if they paid any of the stuff. All right. That'd be great.
I'm sure they did, but we just don't know what is going on there.
We'll be done quick with voting. Consent again.
I don't know how long it's been nonprofit, but it's been a while now.
Sam's speaking.
Well, we're not doing more streets. Crazy world.
Are we still doing the white session?
Yeah.
Aren't we ending that?
Everybody's here.
I would have no problem ending this.
You good?
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the name of God, and to the people who live in this world.
Almighty and everlasting God who presides over all things in heaven and earth, come and preside over these deliberations so that those that make the decisions may be guided by your wisdom.
Thank you, Bill. Roll call, Ms. Pansy.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Marconi.
Here.
Ms. Gilbert is excused. Mr. Barrett.
Here.
Mr. Bulishko.
Here.
Also in attendance is Mayor George Brown, Administrator Charlie McCormick, Administrative Assistant Lisa Samphilipo, and City Attorney Tim Henry. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regular session of council. Please turn off all cell phones. Following our examples of some important council rules, they are not intended to be a complete list. Please adhere as closely as possible to the five-minute speaker presentation time limit. No persons are allowed to address the council from beyond the rail except the speaker at the dais who has the floor. The chairperson shall preserve order and decorum and prevent attacks on personalities. The chairperson shall determine all points of order. No person except city officers or their representatives shall be permitted within the rail during any meeting without the express permission of the council. Council kindly asks that the public please vacate the building within 10 minutes after the meeting adjourns. And finally, when members of the administration are speaking, please stand up and speak into the microphone.
Would anyone like to speak on pending legislation? Sam?
Don't start that timer yet. Just a couple of things. I wanted to voice my disagreement. As you know, I'm not exactly a fan of the health department. I'm a little skeptical concerning the whole purpose. As you know, as many of you know, this is one of the few cities in the Commonwealth that actually have a health department. And I think there's, for instance, the city of Scranton has none. And a lot of the, excuse me, a lot of the things that, responsibilities that our health department has, for instance, keeping up with the quality of residential living, you know, checking to see whether apartments, housing are sanitary, are suitable for human habitation, et cetera, are covered, you know, with other departments like. The question is here, I wondered if anybody can enlighten me as to whether, what the $35,000, is that really necessary for, did somebody from the health department contact the mayor or someone in the administration or one of you people to indicate that this was necessary? Because to the best of my knowledge, they just, you guys just approved, what was it, $900,000 or $1 million for some sort of motor vehicle that goes around to the various neighborhoods? I just, I just don't think that the cost-benefit ratio is there that justifies even the existence of a health department. But I guess we're not going to change that overnight. But money keeps flowing to this, to the health department. And I just, I'm sorry to sound cynical, but I, I think the health department is more of an enclave for, for people who need jobs, you know, that, jobs that aren't necessarily, that aren't necessary. So I would, I don't know if anybody has an answer, but I would like to know how this $35,000, it may not seem like a lot of money, but it is, and I would like to, and I realize it's not coming from the city treasury and all, but that it's, it's still considered tax money. So I would like to know if there's a justification for that. And also, on the other item concerning the, the first item on the agenda, the $960,000 for infrastructure, though you don't use the word "infrastructure," but I just wondered how, if the mayor or Mr. McCormick made arbitrarily made the decisions for these various streets to be paved. Maybe they're in neighborhoods that are, you know, critical to, to the election coming up or something, I don't know. I mean, I'm, again, sorry to sound cynical, but there are a lot of streets in this city that need to be paved and done over. And I could start right here, and this is a nuisance for me every day, and I have a very light car. Washington Street, I wonder maybe, I don't assume that's covered under here, it doesn't say. I guess that's a separate project. And that's a real mess, as you know. And I guess that's, I mean, it's been weeks already since, since this street has been dug up like this. And it's, it's very annoying, and it's, it could be damaging to cars. And I wonder if that's ever going to be cleaned up. And just one more thing, I wondered if the $960,000 would cover, Mr. McCormick, maybe you can answer this, would cover any, any possibility to plant trees in these areas or wherever? I did talk a few months ago with Dave Lewis, somebody in DPW, indicating that there were very, I don't think there were any trees in storage at the garage. And before the season is over, and I know Larry Newman hopefully is going to plant some where necessary. One, one tree was snapped in half there in front of the Kirby Health Center, I hope that's going to be replaced. So I just wondered if the infrastructure improvements, if there's any money allotted there that could be allotted for tree planting, as you know, climate change, if you're not aware, spiraling out of control. One very small way to, to try to fight that is, you know, to plant more trees, which, which absorb more carbon dioxide and beautify the neighborhoods. And actually, there is proof, I don't think I have to sell you guys on this, but there is proof that trees not just, don't just provide aesthetic improvement to an area, but they actually enhance the value of homes and residences. And it's been shown actually to improve, they did a study down at University of Pennsylvania in Philly, to show that planting trees and making parks, instead of having just concrete everywhere, actually helps to improve safety. Anyway, that's all I have, and I appreciate any response I can get. I don't know if anybody has anything.
Sam, I think I could speak for council, and we are thrilled that we're spending near $1 million in the streets of Wilkes-Barre to get paid. That's quite an accomplishment, and I applaud that. That's a lot of money to put in the roads. Whether they need it or not, or we think there should be more, I'm thrilled with it. I think I could speak for my council members as well. As far as the computers go in the health department, they wouldn't be asking if they didn't need for, need, have a need for them. So I don't see an issue with that myself either. If anybody else would like to comment?
No? Ms. Gilbert isn't here tonight?
Thank you, Sam.
No, she would have a comment. You're welcome.
Anyone else on pending legislation? Linda?
Linda Joseph Wilkesbury. I just want to comment on two of the agenda items. First, on the paving of the streets, which, thank you very much, because a couple of those are in our area, Rowing Mill Hill, they need it, a lot of streets need it, but this is a start, and it's, it's a positive thing, there's no question, so, thank you. The second one, for the health department, it seems like there's, there's this opinion sometimes by some, that us having a health department and being one of the few who have a health department of the cities is a bad thing. This is, this is not a bad thing, this is something that we should be proud of. This is, this is a great thing. It's, it's, and money has to be spent to, to allow them to do what they do, and they do a lot. So I want to just say that I think that we are very lucky, and we should be very happy that we have people who go out and take care of us when there are crises, they're at everything possible to attend, to, to provide information, whatever it is. But those, that, it's an excellent thing, so I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else on pending legislation? Okay, thank you.
He is a four minute.
No, you're later.
I'm later?
Yeah, you're later. You'll be first later.
Okay, so we only have three resolutions on the agenda that we're going to take as a consent, so we will need a motion and a second that are on through the minutes.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Brooks.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Marconi. Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Marconi?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Bulishko?
Yes.
Council presentations, Councilman Brooks?
I want to thank Hannah and Steve for the newspaper articles done on the situation that happened with the Zebulon-Buller House. Boy, oh boy, did that move mountains. First thing in the morning, I got apologized from Wilkes University, they replaced the flowers. Then it, one of the volunteers in the neighborhood replaced the sign, and the dean of students called in the eight girls that live next door and reprimanded them. So, thank you, Steve, thank you, Hannah. Nothing farther, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Marconi, anything?
Just, just real quick, it's, for Charlie here in the administration, it's, it's leaf season coming up, and just want to make sure that the vacuum truck is, is available sooner or later. You know, I don't know if we have a schedule yet, or anything to that nature, if you can help me with that.
Yeah, Councilman, what I'd like to do is request five council members to provide a list for me of the streets that you feel you'd like to have, as you said, Councilman, the leaf collector is going to be going out in a few weeks, probably in about two weeks or so. So if you could provide to our office, to Lisa specifically, a list of streets in your districts respectively, and we'll create a list, and we'll start working on that list and start creating an areas that we can work on in all five districts, and we'll start cleaning them up within a couple of weeks. But thank you for bringing that up, Councilman, because I was going to make a mention of it tonight, but you saved me from doing that.
How many trucks do we have, Mayor? Is it one or two?
We're talking about the vacuum truck specifically.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have one or two?
We have two trucks, but the main one is the vacuum truck that we want to get into the areas that are hard to reach, you know, where it might be on a tree lawn or something like that.
Okay.
So specifically, that's what I wanted to really identify, but we have two vehicles that can collect leaves, but specifically, the vacuum trucks are the ones that we want.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Barrett, anything more since Tuesday?
No, just a, just a spin on what you, Councilman Marconi was just talking about. What I see as a problem with the leaves right now, even going on now, and you and I discussed that, the storm drains are already gathering leaves. And I know they're forecasting rain for this weekend and everything, and it's just so hard for the guys to get out there and check all these storm drains. I like to, I always like when I see people taking it upon themselves if there's one in front of their house to take the leaves off of it a little bit and put it in a bag and we pick them up. It's that simple, but.
You just spoke about that, yes.
Yeah.
It would be nice that if the residents could get out there in front of their homes and just clean out on top of the catch basins, it would solve a lot of flooding in this.
And we pick them up, so it's not, not that it's going to be an expense for anybody, but, but it's, I guess you probably want a list of those that are out there too, that are clogged up too as well, but there's so many of them now, the leaves are falling, get a little bit of rain, and they just immediately clog up, so.
Yeah.
Nothing else besides that since Tuesday, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Public discussion. Eugene Wallace, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and welcome guests. I'm Eugene Francis Wallace, was born and raised in Plains, PA, and I spent 46 years in the Middle West. My wife passed away in 15, and in 17 I decided to come home. So these are probably observations I have. I've been, been living at the Valley View Terrace six years, Wilkes-Barre Housing Authority. It's, it's decent, it's quiet, and everybody seems to, to get along and so on. But I, I guess some observations after I got to the Diamond City where the roads and you guys are, you folks are addressing them now, and I, I hope they come to fruition and when the mayor's next term ends. And that was, they're making progress on that, I observed. The valley, the, where I'm living now is, is, okay, it's High Street, and that was paved, and that, that looks real good. And also, Oh, Wilkes-Barre Boulevard, that was paved, and that's significantly improved. And so, and then some things we need to do, which you, I'm not, I don't want to insult your intelligence, I, I think you know that the South Washington Street needs work, North Penn needs work, and hopefully Scranton Joe passed a bill that'll give money to the states, and hopefully KC will give a big chunk to the Commonwealth, and Pachinsky will get a good chunk for the, for the Diamond, Diamond City. So, next thing I was going to talk about is trash bag, is trash cans. I did talk to the Councilor Brooks about that, and he said the, the business people have to do that. And I'm saying maybe the, the city lawyer could write a letter to these businesses, tell them to please cooperate, we want the Diamond City to be, be a clean place, and hope you'll do, you know, you get some more trash cans around. I did notice at one of the intersections there, it would be, I guess, North Penn, or no, maybe South Penn and Hazel, if there's a lot of trash there, possibly we could have some trash, a trash can put there, maybe put one there in, in the other areas. I realize the moneymaker here in the city is the square, and I think there's enough trash cans and such around for that. Another thing that I observed was the south side of sidewalk on Hazel Street, the sidewalk is really in bad shape, and I don't know who, whose responsibility, I gotta believe it's gotta be the city rather than the businesses to, to fix that sidewalk, and I'm sure there's others around. So hopefully you'll, you'll address that here. Okay, that's, I guess, what do I have here on my notes? All right, so, okay, I, thank you, thank you for your time, and we gotta keep working every day. You, you don't have to tell you, the country, the world is a lot different than when I was in Plains High School back in the day. So hopefully some of these issues might be addressed before the end of your term, Mr. Mayor. Okay, go Phillies.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Just so you're aware, the sidewalks would be the responsibility of the abutting property owners.
So that's, that's not the city, right?
Right. Whose ever sidewalks, whose property the sidewalks abutted, we, it would be their responsibility.
Can't the city, can't the city attorney write them a letter and, you know, put some heat on them?
It's in the city code, it's part of our ordinances that put that responsibility on the adjoining landowners.
So, so I mean, if the streets get real terrible, and somebody breaks their neck, they gotta sue the landowner instead of the city?
No, the streets, the streets could be either our responsibility or some streets would be the state's, but the sidewalks would be the abutting property owner's responsibility.
But like I said, sir, though, what if somebody was on the, on the sidewalk, which is deteriorated, and they fall and break a leg, and they want to sue because we're in a, we're in a suing society? I guess they gotta get a good attorney and sue the city or sue the, the abutting, abutting business owners.
Right, they would need to sue the, the property owner whose responsibility, who would be responsible for the sidewalks. And then if that property owner had insurance coverage, it would be, you know, an insurance claim.
So then, okay.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, and just, sir, in answering your questions about the streets, in addition to the $1 million, which is through the OCD budget, the administration spent over $7 million over the last three years on street repairs, and that doesn't include the utilities repaving of much of their major areas. So there's an awful lot of the city that's been repaved. Washington Street is a utility water company project. As soon as it's finished, and I know they're not, they're probably about 75% finished, but they're going to be doing a little lower area, the street is to be paved from Union to South, curb to curb. So that will be taken care of, but this is a necessary process to replace a 130-year-old line that they have going down one of the oldest streets in the city.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, $7 million isn't a lot of money in that today, but hopefully, thank you for your input, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
John Sahoski. John Sahoski, Almond Lane. I'm a little upset with you guys. So the last scheduled meeting, you guys were, you were approving LSA grants. Charlie, I asked if there was any more LSA grants, and you said that there were no more applications. And then you guys, with the Foul Zones grant that you got, that was held up, and then you just had a special meeting at, at Friday at noon. I mean, it must be convenient that you guys could catch, get a quorum at on a Friday at noon to have a meeting when like, there's only five or six people who, who, who come and speak about them. I don't know if you guys were afraid of talk, like hearing what the people had to say that you had to have a, a meeting at noon, but, you know, it's legal, but it's, it's kind of shady. It ju, it just shows that you guys didn't want any public input at that meeting, that you had it at noon instead of at 6 o'clock like you just normally would have a meeting. But I, I need to know, like, the other, I think there was three more LSA grants that came in. So did, so you guys are, I don't know, what I'm getting is from the last meet, from the meeting between, the last scheduled meeting, that there was no more applicants. And then three popped up, so were, did these applicants just apply for that without knowing that there was a special meeting or anything, and then they just magically applied for, for grants? You know, it's, just doesn't look like, it just, just kind of looked weird because how would people apply for grants when they didn't even know that there was going to be another meeting? So, that's all I have.
John, just real quick on that, we didn't have any at that time. They came in late.
There was no scheduled meeting, though.
Well, we thought it was, not we, the applier, appliers thought we had another meeting last month, and we didn't, and it had to be done by the end of last month. So we had to call a special meeting just for that. I know it looks like it's not.
Doesn't look like it's on the up and up.
It doesn't look good, I understand that, but it, believe me, it's on the up and up.
And the noon thing, the noon thing, that's not cool. Don't do that again. Have it at 6 o'clock when people could actually show up.
What do we have, noon?
We had it Friday at noon.
Yeah, you had it Friday at noon.
Yeah, I think we, we needed to get it in.
We had to get it in.
Well, it's convenient with people with no jobs, with people with jobs, you can't show up at noon.
Thank you, John. Sam Troy?
Sam Troy, I just want to touch, I'm also in agreement with John on that meeting, and I know there was publicity, the legal notice was filed and all. Generally speaking, I, I think the idea of public financing, in this case the LSA grants of private enterprise, to me, is not right, it's immoral. And, and to go beyond that, to public, to nonprofit agencies, that's seemingly, that's okay, except for Wilson Kings, which, both of these institutions which have enormous amounts of real estate in the city and pay virtually no taxes, and very little through the pilot program. I think that's unfair to the rest of us, who are burdened with, you know, even though there was no property tax increase last year, there could be one this year, and we're racked with these fees, these store fee and recycling fee, et cetera. It's an enormous burden on people. I don't know if you read it, Mayor Brown, or any of you people, but the gap between rich and poor is growing, and that applies for this town probably more significantly than other areas in the, in the nation. So empathy is a key word here. I, I mean, you're, you're all falling each, over each other to award these grants, while ignoring the needs and concerns of the local taxpayers. Anyway, I wanted to comment, I wanted to see if the mayor had any response. There was a meeting a couple nights ago at the county courthouse. As we all know, Stephen Baruch is determined to see this project through. So there's a, there's a rumor going around, Mayor Brown, I wish you would address. I don't know if it's true, it's just a rumor maybe, but I, I, what is left in the ARP funding anyway, about $10 million, something like that? I mean, I could be wrong, maybe it's more, I don't think it's less. Would anybody know, offhand? But there's a rumor going around that you're going to commit a large portion of this to Mr. Baruch to get this thing done. Now that the city has been backed into a corner between a rock and a hard place, since there's no reversionary clause, the city cannot get this property back. We're, the city is at the mercy of Sam Still, the developer, and Mr. Baruch. He is seeking more money through the county redevelopment authority, which, there's a great argument about, it's pretty ambiguous, they don't know if he's going to actually be able to get that money, five or $6 million. But it seems like he's going to have to be bailed out. He's determined to get 100% public financing in this project, which I think is wrong, we're back to that old square one. Public financing, or if you want to call it corporate welfare, is that right? To get, go forward with this project? What does Wilkes-Barre need, another posh development project for, to, to have, you know, high-end, high-end apartments, condominiums, restaurant, et cetera? Genetti's, I hear, only has a 50% residency rate over here, that they're hurting, and now they're going to add more competition with this? I, I mean, well, I guess it's too late now, but the, the decision to go forward with that, and I hope, I hope the city will not commit that public money, and have better things to do with it, the ARP money than to intend to give this to Mr. Baruch to go forward with this project. Along other lines, I was, I was wondering if the mayor or somebody could tell me, I guess this is a kind of a moot point, but nothing seems to be done. Another, another unethical, that's all I'm going to say, practice is the situation with the pensions in this city. Not just the size of the pensions, which is another issue, but the fact that the pension, pensions can include overtime work. One case, we know of a retired police officer making, now, I'm not saying that it wasn't a great asset to the city or whatever, making something like $10,000 a month because overtime was included as in pension. Is this right? Is this ethical? I mean, isn't anything going to be done about this? You're probably going to say your hands are tied, that are renegotiate with the unions, et cetera. And I'm not, I know there's like five unions in this city, right? And it's the same situation across the board, that all, that people are allowed to get overtime, excessive amounts in certain cases, and apply that to their pensions. I don't think that's right. When most of us are struggling, I'll tell you right now, I'm not, I'm getting barely $1,000 a month in social security. I have to struggle in another part-time job just to make ends meet. I'm not crying on your shoulders, but I'm just telling you the situation out there is pretty dire. If the mayor also can tell us what the size of the debt service is, and I want to make one more modest proposal before my time runs up. I don't mean literally, I mean, I mean, with the, got to have a sense of humor. I'll only be five seconds saying this, but I think we should, council should pass an ordinance or resolution, whatever it takes, to get a comptroller's report here at least once every other meeting, to tell us what the status of the fiscal situ, this fiscal situation is here. He has never attended a meeting, it's about time he starts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Am I out of order?
Yeah.
I was going to tell a joke, but now I don't have time.
Anyone?
It's a good joke, too.
Anyone?
Mike Owen.
Okay.
All right, Mayor, I know you come through.
Sam, I'm going to answer two of your questions. First of all, the city has not made any commitment financially to the project that's going on right now, okay? I don't know where you heard that rumor. I don't care about rumors because I don't listen to it, I don't believe them. No, there's been no commitment by the city for that project.
Zero?
Zero. Secondly, to add another answer to one of your questions, Sam, all due respect to you, we discussed this several times about the way that overtime is, is given out, okay? It's part of a collective bargaining agreement. We have to adhere to the collective bargaining agreement. We have to adhere to the collective bargaining agreement, and any changes have to be negotiated, okay, Sam? We have four unions that we're negotiating contracts with this year, and I can't talk about what's going on in the negotiations, it's not fair, but all I'm trying to tell you is that the way overtime is distributed, it's according to the collective bargaining agreement. That's the best way I can answer for you.
I can't renegotiate? You are renegotiating. Was that what you said? You're renegotiating the collective bargaining agreement?
This year, we have four union contracts that are, that are in the process or have been completed in negotiations, okay?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.